Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular meeting of the St. Joseph County Council for May 13th, 2025. Please stand for the invocation. Mr. Steve Dalton will give the invocation. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, Creator God, we thank you for the privilege to represent the citizens of South Bend, Mishawaka, the towns in St. Joseph County and the townships. Father, tonight we have on the agenda a whole bunch of really important things about money and public safety and health, and we know that for some people these are driving issues and for others they may seem a little bit boring, but Father, thank you for the opportunity to represent. Thank you for the opportunity to have the wisdom that you would give us in making decisions, the grace in the midst of disputes, and the humility in our approach. Thank you, Father God, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Next are petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 8th, 2025, public hearing?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes. The minutes of the April 8th, 2025, public hearing have been approved. I do want to take a moment to thank Jen Preywat, our hard-working secretary. We are having technical issues with some of our equipment, and she had to spend an extraordinary amount of time getting us the minutes, so Jen, thank you for your hard work. Are there any other petitions, communications, or miscellaneous matters? Seeing none, we move on to board appointments. May I have a motion for appointment to the MACOG Board?
I approve Brian, uh, appoint Brian Tanner to the MACOG Board.
Second.
I have a motion to approve Brian Tanner to the MACOG Board by Councilwoman Hess, a second by Councilman Thomas. Are there any other nominations at this time? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes nine to zero. Councilman Tanner is appointed to the MACOG Board. Do we have a report from the county auditor?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any commissioner's report?
No report.
Thank you. Commissioner, report from any council special committees. I do not believe we have any at this time. Next, our first readings. Clerk, would you please read Bill Number 39-25?
An ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council concerning park improvements by the St. Joseph County Park and Recreation Board through the issuance of sale of bonds and other matters connected therewith, and approving the additional appropriation by the Park Board of the proceeds of the bonds. Petitioner, St. Joseph County Park Board and Commissioners.
Bill Number 39-25 is assigned to the Budget and Administration Committee. Clerk, would you please read Bill Number 40-25?
An ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 land uses, Chapter 154, planning and zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at 14212 State Road 23 Highway from our single-family district to OB Office Buffer District. Petitioner, Reed Solutions LLC.
Bill Number 40-25 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. Clerk, would you please read Bill Number 41-25?
An ordinance approving the petition for a special use filed by Hawke Stettler, Gary Hawke Stettler and Crystal Hawke Stettler, Living Trust with Life Estates for property located at 69870 Beach Road, Madison Township. Petitioner, Gary and Crystal Hawke Stettler.
Bill Number 41-25 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. Clerk, would you please read Bill Number 42-25?
An ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 land uses, Chapter 154, planning and zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at approximately 1,057 acres on the south side of Chicago Trail, west of Spruce Road and east of Timothy Road, comprised of 520, 52505 Spruce Road, 53501 Walnut Road, 322062 Chicago Trail, and contiguous unaddressed parcels from A Agricultural District to I Industrial District. Petitioners, Randy and Betty Shiporsky and Betty, and Mallow O'Manner LLC.
Bill Number 42-25 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. That concludes first readings for this evening. Next are salary amendments. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 37-25?
An ordinance amending Ordinance 76-24, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2025. Petitioner, Health Department.
Committee report, please.
Uh, Mr. President, Bill Number 37-25 comes with the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hess. Petitioner?
Hi, yes, Amy Rupi, Director of Finance with the Department of Health, offices on the eighth and ninth floor of the county city building, and we are requesting to move some personnel to our local Public Health Services Fund. These are the staff from our immunization grant. The grant had ended March 25th with no notice, so we request approval to move the staff to be funded through our HFI funds.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rupi. Are there any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we will open the public hearing on Bill Number 37-25. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing none, is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill Number 37-25. Any comments, any further comments from council members? Mr. Katanzerite?
Mr. Shetzel, thank you. Just want to say, um, I can't be more disappointed to hear that we're having problems with our system here. I just want to say that I can't be more disappointed that this funding has been abruptly cut from the Health Department due to policies from the CDC and other places that have decided that we should no longer do this immunization program as we have in the past and prevent COVID-19 with, by eliminating this grant, so just want to say that I'm disappointed, not in our local Health Department, but in the, more in the state and national players that have paused the funding for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katanzerite. Any other council member comments? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Have a motion for approval from Councilwoman Hess, seconded by Councilman Tanner. Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Mr. Rutten?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Chabaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Passes nine, zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 37-25 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 38-25?
An ordinance amending Ordinance 76-24, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2025. Petitioner, Prosecutor.
Committee report, please.
Uh, Mr. President, Bill Number 38-25 comes with the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hess. Petitioner?
Yes, Bob Reisenhoover, Prosecutor's Office, offices on the 10th floor of this building. We're here this evening to ask for appropriation and salary amendment for a long-term employee to pay her PTO that she's got coming to her. The money will be paid, money and fringe will be paid out of the prosecutor's pre-trial diversion fund, nothing from the county. The amount of the, uh, request is $5,234.
Thank you, Mr. Reisenhoover. Are there any questions from council for the petitioner? Mr. Katanzerite?
I have an unrelated question for Mr. Reisenhoover.
Yes, sir.
Have you guys begun to tackle the Adult Protective Services fiasco that's happening with the state of Indiana right now? Is it going to impact our program delivery with APS? Have you been made aware that the funding's going to get?
Yes, we're working on it, as we spoke today. Yes, it's, it's in the process. It'll happen July 1st this year.
Will APC, APS go away?
Is it going to be taken over by another company that's, the parent company of the people that's taking over will hire two additional companies to administer the program throughout the state. Other than that, we really don't know, except it's every county in the state statewide. APS will no longer be under the prosecutor's direction.
And we, we what, had five counties under our?
We have four. We're a hub.
Counties under our?
Right. All the surrounding counties are under Ken Cotter's direction.
Thank you. I'm sorry, it wasn't related to this bill, but I read the article recently and was made aware of it and was concerned. Thank you.
Ken, Ken plans on talking to everybody about it as soon as the dust settles a little bit. We actually just found out that this was official about a week ago. Up until that time, it was still up in the air if the state would take it over or the prosecutor's counsel would maintain it, so it's been decided and we're making plans for all the employees and everything we need to do.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Katanzerite. Any other questions from council members? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing on Bill Number 38-25. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, is there, are there any further comments from council members? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. Rutten to approve, seconded by Mr. Tanner. Clerk, please take the roll.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Chabaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutten?
Yes.
President Shetzel?
Yes.
Passes nine, zero.
Thank you. Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 38-25 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next is public hearing, public comments on fiscal matters. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 34-25?
An ordinance appropriating and transferring monies for the purpose herein specified for the several departments herein listed of St. Joseph County Government.
Because all fiscal matters were heard and discussed by the council at its April 2025 committee meeting, we will move directly to public comment on Bill Number 34-25, Parts A through G. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, do we have any other comments by council members? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion for approval by Councilwoman Hess, seconded by Councilman Fig. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Chabaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutten?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
President Shetzel?
Yes.
Passes nine, zero.
Let the record show that Bill Number 34-25 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 29-25?
Appropriation ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council, petitioner, St. Joseph County Auditor.
Committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President. The Bill Number 29-25 was brought to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner. Petitioner?
Good evening, council members. Tom Everett with Barnes &amp; Thornburg with offices at 201 South Main Street in South Bend. This ordinance would appropriate $4,270,000 that the county has on hand from the PSAP distribution of the county's local income tax in order to redeem the county's Economic Development Income Tax revenue bonds of 2014. In other words, this ordinance would appropriate PSAP funds on hand to pay off the 2014 bonds early. The 2014 bonds were issued to fund the construction of the 911 Communication Center. As of June 30th of this year, the 2014 bonds will be outstanding in the amount of $4,270,000, and the county proposes to redeem all of those outstanding bonds on that date. If adopted tonight, the county commissioners would consider approval of this ordinance next week. I'm happy to answer any questions on the ordinance. Mr. Murphy and Mr. Dalton are also able to answer any questions on the financial side.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Mr. Thomas?
How much are we saving, how much are we, uh, it was supposed to expire when?
The final maturity for these bonds would be December 31 of 2034, so paying them off roughly, um, nine years early.
And that's saving us, uh, so that savings, John, uh, we'll see that right away?
That savings will be?
In the '26.
It'll be accrued, yeah, right, in the '26 budget, the PSAP fund will have extra money.
How much was that again?
The bond service is about, debt service is about $600,000 a year, something like that.
About 600, okay.
Times nine, John?
What was that?
Times, yeah.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Multiplied times nine, nine years.
Yeah, that's rough, you know, we can get you the amortization schedule so you could see exactly what we're saving, but it's a great opportunity to save, you know, to pay off a bond early. We're, we're happy about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No further comments from the council. We'll go to the public hearing on Bill Number 29-25. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, are there any, uh, close the public hearing on Bill Number 29-25. Are there any further comments by any of the council members? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve Bill Number 29-25?
Second.
Motion to approve made by Councilman Tanner, seconded by Councilman Thomas. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Chabaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutten?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Shetzel?
Yes.
Passes nine, zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 29-25 passed to nine to zero. Hold on just a moment. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 30-25?
An ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 land uses, Chapter 154, planning and zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at unaddressed 40-acre parcel immediately southwest of the intersection of Cleveland Road and Current Road from A Agricultural District to I Industrial District. Petitioner, Heritage Land Operations LLC.
Committee report, please.
Mr. Shetzel, this Bill 30-25 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Katanzerite. Petitioner?
This is Sean Klein, Area Plan Commission Director with offices on the 11th floor of this building. This is a petition to rezone approximately 40 acres on the south side of Cleveland Road, just west of Current Road. The rezoning would be from A Agricultural to I Industrial with the intent of allowing this parcel to be developed along with the parcels to the east, south, and west for a data center use. This is the property as it looks from Cleveland Road. And as you'll recall, um, the property to the east, to the south, and to the west, as well as several large parcels to the northeast, were rezoned to I Industrial in May of 2024 to allow for a data center. There is property to, immediately to the north, zoned A Agricultural, currently farmed and owned by the same owner as, um, the property in question here, and then when you look to the northwest, there are properties zoned are single-family, which are also being farmed. The site plan submitted does show for a data center use. Any access to Cleveland Road, as in any case, is subject to county engineer approval in terms of the location. The county engineer also states that a traffic study is required to determine what additional infrastructure improvements may be required given the additional traffic generated by this use. The petitioner is proposing a set of written commitments which are identical with the rest of the data center development site that surrounds this on all sides, those being a prohibition of several more intense and heavier industrial uses, as well as off-premise signs. Again, a traffic study is committed to in the written commitments as well, as well as a minimum 200-foot green space buffer along the Jude Creek, measured on 100 feet from, um, from the center lines of the creek, and additionally, there, there's a written commitment stating that the properties shall meet local, state, and federal requirements related to wetlands, floodway, and floodway fringe. Looking at the recently adopted future land use map for St. Joseph County, this area is shown as light industrial, specifically with an overlay that suggests that it's appropriate for business, research, and tech uses, and a data center would be consistent with those anticipated uses for this property. This does come from, to you from the Area Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation, 6-1, that is subject to the full written commitments proposed by the petitioner. At the public hearing before the Area Plan Commission, there were three residents who spoke in remonstrance, mostly citing a concern that this rezoning would spur additional rezonings to I Industrial within that vicinity. Beyond that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Any questions from the council for the petitioner?
The petitioner?
The petitioner will get an opportunity, but if you have any questions, very clear.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, for Area Plan, go ahead. Yes. Mr. Rutten, do you have a question?
I do not.
Oh, okay. All right. No questions for Area Plan, as the petitioner here.
Good evening. Angela Smith with Dan Charner Associates, offices located at 1643 Commerce Drive. Sean had provided a great summary of the project we're looking at. This is a kind of follow-up to the rezoning that we had about a year ago at this time. The property is, um, around this is now owned by Microsoft. This is kind of what I've commonly referred to as the missing tooth. This particular property was not available at the time we sought this petition, but is valuable in allowing for comprehensive development of the site, especially if we're looking at improvements that might come out of our traffic impact study or extension of utilities to this. This would allow an opportunity for that to be cohesive and to be under the control of one property owner that, who can then work with the county for those improvements. This parcel, also the property owner approached because this would become difficult for them to get equipment to and from the smaller piece, and felt like it would be appropriate to include in this project as well. As Sean mentioned, or as are required in the written commitments, we are currently quite a ways into a traffic impact study. The corporation is working closely with Sky Matters to make sure that we're addressing all those requirements, and we are proposing all of the same written commitments, even though most of them, well, a couple of them don't apply to this particular property, we wanted to make sure it was consistent across both petitions so there was no question or perception that we were trying to do anything different than what we had committed to the first time. So, for instance, this property does not touch Jude Creek, but just want to make sure that we're still very clear that we are working diligently with Jude Creek Task Force to make sure we can make improvements in this area and are addressing that appropriately. This particular prod, property is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all the criteria as established by the, uh, state law for rezoning. More specifically, the time we came before you last year, the comprehensive plan was proposed but not fully adopted. Now it's fully adopted, so the answer to comprehensive plan is a very clear indication here. This petition is consistent with what was proposed in the comprehensive plan, and while it may not appear to be part of the current character and conditions, it certainly will be consistent with the character and conditions of the adjacent property that will be developing in the future. The most desirable use of the property, as I mentioned, is a challenge for the farmer to continue to farm that 40 acres and provide access, which is why they're proposing to sell it to my client, and in terms of responsible development and growth, this is in fact why we're seeking this, to make sure that we can have a consistent development along, especially along Cleveland Road. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and we respectfully request your favorable approval.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any questions from council for the petitioner?
Yeah, I have a question.
Mr. Rutten? Councilman Rutten?
Yeah, Angela, the, um, so I think we're not looking to relitigate, re-debate the, the prior rezoning from last summer. That, that was done. It's now all zone industrial, so this little piece is, was kind of separate from that, and you mentioned, uh, missing tooth. I think that's a, you know, good analogy. Uh, I remember from last summer that, uh, what was, that was proposed as a, a business tech park use, and it was put in writing in the application. It was mentioned over and over again. So is that the intention then for, for this 40 acres, is to fit within that and be used as a business tech park?
Uh, this 40 acres is a contingent purchase by the same owner, Microsoft, as the larger parcel for a data center. So yes, it would be all consistent with the already zoned property.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
Mr. Shetzel?
Mr. Thomas?
Um, what are your plans going forward? One data center on that property?
So data centers are typically a series of buildings. We haven't gotten into the site planning. It's kind of hard to do that at this point without knowing exactly what, what property we're working with. So I, we don't have details on the exact number of buildings. The site plan we provided was kind of an example, just to show something because we were asked to provide something. It's not in, any indication that that's how that's going to be built or anything like that. Microsoft does not use, um, kind of cookie cutter stamped product. They custom design their sites, and once we have determined the full extent of what we have to work with, they will get deeper into that process.
How many, so how many could you fit on that parcel? Do you know?
I don't know how to answer that question because I don't believe that's fully been explored.
Do you plan on, um, purchasing another land around that?
There is no, there's no plans at this time to purchase anything more. Again, this was, this particular parcel was just for the missing tooth, um, that kind of like in, that piece in there. We're not looking to expand, um, at this time to the east or south or even to the north. We're just trying to fill in that piece to allow for that development to be consistent along Cleveland Road.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the distinct qualities of this additional property, if, if you will, is that working around it, if this was not included, may force buildings to be closer to Jude Creek, whereas this, the inclusion of this property and the continuity with Cleveland Road actually allows you to build closer to Cleveland Road. Would that be true? Even without knowing a detailed site plan, it gives you more opportunity for that comprehensive development pattern away from Jude Creek?
I would say, you know, again, we don't know where any buildings are going, but certainly I can attest to the infrastructure. So for instance, if, if utility lines are extended, to have to kind of cut around this parcel would be not only, um... would be not only illogical in some ways, but challenging. It would probably put an undue burden on this particular property owner, where the county might have to approach them for additional right-of-way, for instance, for roadway expansion if that was required. And so this allows us to be included and incorporated in there, all under one agreement.
And just in general, if there were buildings further away from Cleveland Road, even if there wasn't a Jude Creek there, if it was something else, buildings further away from the main artery requires longer access roads and more impervious surface, which increases the amount of drainage impact as well, right? So being able to be a little bit more adjacent to Cleveland provides more, not just savings for the developer or the owner, but also savings to the community and the potential impacts of that drainage concern, correct?
Yeah, and what you'd see in the comprehensive plan that you adopted, it talks about centering development along major corridors for that, partially for that reason.
Thank you.
That does remind me of another question that I had. I'd actually prefer to ask this of our county engineer, Sky Metters, but I don't know that he's here tonight, so. But I think that there was a question that was posed to me outside of this meeting, that with these data centers being so large, and Mr. Tanner just reminded me of this, that, you know, drainage could become tricky. And I know that St. Joe County has a plan for, you know, requirements for drainage. So can you talk just a little bit about how the drainage will be managed at this site so that it won't affect the surrounding community, and especially, you know, the drinking water?
Sure. So, again, we don't have any specific details, but what I can tell you is that the county has one of the strictest drainage requirements of any community I've worked in in the whole region. They usually far surpass anything that any storm event will ever have. So a lot of times, even if you have an above-ground retention area, you'll see a lot of what we call free board at the top, where there's the area that's not have any water in it, even on the heaviest rainfall. So they kind of overplan in the county. That would all, we'd have to meet all the requirements, not only of the drainage requirements, but anything related to the flood zones here that are adjacent to this property. So there's additional requirements that kind of come into play when you have those areas. We'd also have to meet all the landscaping requirements, lighting requirements, building standards, and all the other requirements of the zoning ordinance.
So a retention basin would be, that would be sized proportionally to the size of the development. Is that intended to hold all drainage, to keep drainage from, you know, basically flooding off-site, at least until it is absorbed in the ground?
Yeah, so our requirement is that anything that's created by the development or impervious surface of our project has to be retained within our own site. It can't overflow to any other property.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rudden. Any other comments from council or questions? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on bill number 30-25. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, counsel, Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlyle. I don't know that I'm speaking, the rezoning has happened. It's industrial. So that's water under the bridge. I've heard a number of people at these meetings speak of the atrocious traffic at Cleveland and Current, and what this rezoning will cause in that area, and the growth that's going to happen in that area. And I would, I've spoken to Mr. Shalio about it. It would, I hope we've learned a lesson from Larison Road, State Road 2, Strawberry Road area, that you have to have the infrastructure in place before you let your developers break ground. And I just wonder if we can get some sort of a commitment from Ms. Smith, that the developer will wait until the road studies are done, till then, if they decide the roads have to be widened, there has to be bridges, there has to be cutoffs, whatever has to be done to make that a less dangerous area, if they could agree to let that infrastructure get put in place before they put a shovel in the ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caruso. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Mike McManus, 51940 Lilac Road. Tooth by tooth, our farmlands are being extracted from our mouths. Pretty soon, we'll be able to do nothing but drink, because we'll just have gums. And if we want to drink water, we won't be able to do much of that in this county anymore, because after a while, these data centers are going to suck all of the water and life out of our county. Microsoft is a big and brilliant company. They have told us tonight, from their own mouths, that they can custom design this, that they have no plans yet. Therefore, to meet Mr. Tanner's concerns, I'm sure their brilliant designers can design around this 40-acre spot and make sure we don't get any closer to Jude Creek. As Mr. Caruso said, no one foresaw the problems that we were going to have with traffic out in New Carlyle, even though there were lots of studies and lots of assurances. It's still a mess out there, so I think we can all assume, no matter what, it's still going to be a mess on Cleveland Road. So at some point, we have to put our foot down and just say enough. We have enough data centers in this county. Please don't add to the mess. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McManus.
Good evening. Tom Rowe, 26160 Lake Lane, South Bend, Indiana. Can everybody hear me? Okay, I want to make sure. I wasn't even planning on coming up in regard to this specific issue, but then with the petitioner back there, there were some really legitimate questions that came from the council members. And the one thing that I heard consistently in regard to this project or this proposal is some "I don't knows." "I don't know." And with that "don't know," there will try to be more clarification. I actively listened, and I don't think the county council currently has enough knowledge as to the impacts as to what the lady was sharing. You asked really legitimate questions. I don't know whether you've gotten the answers that you need. So it would be my recommendation at this point in time to go back, revisit it, and table it until we have better answers. When I was out at the open house at New Carlyle a couple weeks ago, consistently, people, including myself, said, "We're getting the cart before the horse." And this seems to be a consistent pattern with this council. Let's rush through, and then, oh, let's find out about the traffic flow. I think I've spoken enough at this point in time in regard to this matter, that I would hopefully create enough concern amongst council members that you give this serious consideration, and that you don't have the answers yet. And how can it hurt? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
John Hamilton, 913 West Colfax. The date is done, but the question is, what should this council be doing with future projects? Should you not require, for example, no non-disclosure agreements? If somebody is going to come here and say they want to take our water, our air, our land, then they should not be the beneficiaries of a non-disclosure agreement that makes it impossible for the public to find out what really is going on. So that should be condition number one. Number two, while many in the unfortunate one side of the political spectrum seems to deny global warming, global warming is a fact. 429 now parts per million of CO2 in the atmosphere, once again, is 14 million years ago, when we last had it that level. We have no idea what we are buying into. And to blindly accept the idea that development is what must happen, regardless of what the people want, regardless of what your voters want, is asinine. Please think about what you are doing to yourselves and your progeny. Your children are going to have to live with what you are doing. The useful life of these data centers is approximately 30 years. Do you really want to create brownfields in place of cropland? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Mr. Francis, I'll let you go first.
Good evening, councilors. Yes, I'd like to speak in opposition to this. I know it's only 40 acres, and it's been described as a tooth, but I would recall that when the rezoning was done last year, we were really told and pledged, in some sense, that the data centers would be developed up along, up on, north of Cleveland Road, way up near the toll road to mask the sound that comes from the data centers. If you are worried about sound from solar, you certainly should be worried about the sound that comes from data centers. It's very loud and constant. So now we see, okay, well, this land is available. I, you know, let's get it, let's put a data center in there, which 25-acre data center could be several million square feet, so it's not small. Depends upon the design, as Angela said. I would also say that now we're moving south of Cleveland Road, further or closer to Jude Creek. By the way, I'm, I live on Jude Lake. Steve Francis is my name. I don't think I introduced myself for the recorder, but I really take offense that, you know, this can just be done in a domino effect, that one after the other. And I do not take any kind of pledge that's being made today, that they're not going to want the triangle north of that, the land east of that, if in fact, AI and data centers take off. Plus, we have other companies that are circling. And I would remind you that last night, yesterday, while I was at your joint council and commissioners' meeting, where more than a quarter of you were present, was partly because you were going to be making a decision about this very property or this area tonight, and that you were not holding a public session, so that the media and others, and those of us in the public who have interest, could see what your good questions were last night or yesterday at the executive session. Tonight, I think you asked good questions, but are you listening to the answers? Jude Creek needs to be protected, number one. The Jude Creek Task Force met with Angela, it's true, but they only agreed to extend it another 25 feet before what's, beyond what's legally required, the 75-foot at the drainage board. So the task force asked for 300 feet. You can read their minutes. And they settled at 100 feet, only 25 feet more. I would challenge Microsoft to develop this as their flagship property and show that they will, they will conserve energy and resources and be conservation advocates in this community by preserving Jude Creek more than they've committed to at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. I see a hand up. Okay, is that Mary? Mary, would you like to go ahead and speak, please? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Mary Countryman, 52959 Timothy Road, New Carlyle. I think there needs to be more studied before this is passed. It seems as if there's a few unanswered questions. I'm, and I, I'm not sure, because our internet's awful out here, and it froze up a couple of times, and I don't think any, the answers were truly answered. I think it was kind of danced around with the number of buildings. Maybe I missed that. I do believe, I agree with Mr. Francis and the other two gentlemen that spoke with their points. They brought up some very good points. Jude Creek does need to be protected, and that 300 feet should be respected, since it was asked. And the data center wasn't invited in by the community, only a few, so it should be respected by those who are trying to protect the community. So if that was answered with the number of shells, I didn't hear it. And the water seems to be some issues there. The letters of remonstrance are justified to be concerned, because people, how are people supposed to plan where they're going to live, or build a house, or even move to a house, if they don't know? I mean, people literally could be moving every couple of years, because, oh, I moved next to it out in the nice farm country, and it's going to get rezoned to industry. So, I mean, it has to stop at some point, and enough is enough. So I think, I hope that's taken into consideration, because how could people even live anywhere? How could you plan to move or build a house if you don't know in the next few years if something's going to be rezoned to industry? The example, passing the traffic study, I don't know if New Carlyle, I'm guessing there was the traffic study for Highway 2. I would say that something failed in that traffic study. There's accidents out there so often. A woman called me today, just a friendly phone call, and she told me that her husband had been in an accident T-bone by one of these cement trucks, and they didn't want to call insurance, because they've had too many accidents. They didn't want it reported that way. So they're dealing with that, and there are so many accidents around this area. But the infrastructure definitely needs to be in place before anything starts. If anything, please learn from the New Carlyle area. Even Highway 20 at this point is awful. It is horrible trying, if you're coming in or going out of town around the time in the morning, when people are going to work and coming home. It's, it looks like something you'd see in downtown Chicago on the Dan Ryan Backtup. It's awful. So please consider the traffic and the environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Countryman. Clay, you're up next. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, everyone. My name is Clay. Address is 27433 Inwood Road, North Liberty, Indiana. I was speaking on your narrative around the green buffer. I think it should be more specified on what that green buffer entails. Green lawns don't really provide an ecological benefit to our area, and it's critical to maintain sensitive ecosystems and vegetation, especially near sensitive sites like Jude Creek. I would also encourage you guys to look into potentially a vegetative buffer ordinance around these facilities, similar to what you've done for solar facilities. And yeah, that's all I'd like to share.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak in opposition? One more.
I would.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Ms. Nick, go ahead, Ms. Nix.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Nix. I live in Clay Township. I wanted to read a couple excerpts from a South Bend Tribune article that was published Sunday, May 11th. Data center boom means more fossil fuel reliance, and growing number of Hoosiers are concerned about pollution. Data centers require massive amounts of electricity to operate. Just 10 of the new data centers proposed in the state will require nearly 9,700 megawatts of electricity, according to data collected by Citizens Action Coalition. That equals about one-third of Indiana's entire electricity generating capacity during the summer months, when energy demand is already high. According to the U.S. Energy Information Administration, this large demand for power, advocates say, will continue Indiana's heavy reliance on burning fossil fuels for energy and exacerbate the growing effects of climate change. They say the process also has the potential to negatively affect the state's water availability and quality. Coal has already polluted Indiana's waterways from the improperly stored impoundment of ash left behind after burning. And the emissions from burning coal that spew into Indiana's skies exacerbates the effects of climate change. Burning coal also pollutes the air Hoosiers breathe. An Amazon data center in northern Indiana, for instance, will require 2,000 megawatts of electricity. Inkskeep says that's 10 times greater than the very large industrial facilities, such as the steel manufacturers and concrete plants in the state. The potential environmental impacts of this immense energy requirement also are extraordinarily large, Inkskeep said. I would just like to say that one of my other... I would just like to say that one of my other concerns is when the question was asked by Mr. Thomas, how many data centers are we talking about? The answer was, I don't know. And that's not acceptable to me as a resident of this county, and it should not be acceptable to you as county council members. I'm asking you to vote no on this particular bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nick. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Bill number thirty dash twenty-five. Petitioner, would you like to respond?
I'm going to try to make my way through the list. If I miss one, let me know. So, I'm going to start probably first with the concerns about not having enough information. So, one of the things that helps guide development is obviously the comprehensive plan, which was extensively had public hearings and adopted by this council. That plan helps shape where development is going. I, it's, I, I say it because I'm a planner, I understand the general public doesn't do this, but that's always a good guide when you're looking for where you're buying property or what you're looking at, because that's guiding where development's going. That's the guiding force for the council under the state law to help determine what rezonings are appropriate and what's not, as well as the zoning ordinance, which is adopted by the council. That dictates how we can develop the site, and we have to meet or exceed all of the requirements of the zoning ordinance, which creates the predictability of what you might have, including buffers and other things like that, including noise, light, emissions, and drainage, as we talked about earlier. As far as the traffic study, our written commitment does require us to have that traffic study done before we can move forward. That's always been our plan. We are taking this very slow and methodically, which is why we're here before you tonight. This forty acres is critical to our ability to implement anything that comes out of that traffic impact study, to make sure that we can have all of the lessons learned from everything that happened on the west side of the county not be repeated out here. So not only are we looking at the traffic impact once the site's fully constructed, but also the impact during construction. So all of that's being extensively evaluated and discussed with Sky, and we'll have to meet all the requirements of the county engineer. Loss of ag land has come up a couple of times. Again, this particular area in the comp land is shown as an area for industrial growth for business tech parks because, partially because it was identified as the fact that this area is no longer prime ag land. Something people don't think about either is when properties like this that are more suited for industrial development are sold, that opens up an opportunity for that farmer to take their proceeds and go buy additional farmland where they are, where they do have prime land to, to go along that lines. Not to mention that in our discussions with Judee Creek Task Force, agriculture is not the ideal and best use to be adjacent to Judee Creek because of the nitrates and pesticides that are used on the farming equipment, or farming products and everything that runs into the creek. So they were actually quite excited about the fact that the farming would not be the long-term use of this property. The commitments and discussion about the buffer for Judee Creek, again, that is not part of this parcel, we do not touch or come within that buffer. So even if this particular rezoning were to put that commitment on it, it would not necessarily apply to the other property, which has already gone through the process. But as I've said before, we are committed to continuing to work with Judee Creek Task Force. The team is planning on exceeding all of the landscape regulations. We have talked about vegetated buffers. We are looking at this in a very serious manner and making sure that we're addressing all of those issues. Let's see, what else is on here? In terms of water usage, unlike some of the other data centers, our particular data center does not use a water system for cooling. It's a closed-loop system, so the water usage that will be used for this building is simply domestic use. So what you would expect for employees of an office building to use for their daily shifts. Let's see what else. I think I may have touched on all of those. If I miss one, let me know, but again, we're talking today specifically about the forty acre tract, which is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And very early in our development, we are continuing to work with the county quite extensively and taking this in a very slow and methodical approach. Every, every piece of this will be discussed at great length with both the planning team and I'm sure the economic development team, and will be addressed as we move forward. This is really our next step in understanding what we have to work with and plan for. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Tanner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Angela, with regard to a couple of those items, for clarity, we, we talked extensively, you have, at least at this point, about water supply is not going to be necessary for the cooling of the data centers based on the design standards and the approach that Microsoft uses, correct?
Mm-hmm.
We've talked about only domestic use, although we hope that it's not required. It would also be water usage for fire suppression, right? Although that's not daily use, that's emergent use, right?
Correct, yes, you have to have water supply for the fire suppression.
Yeah, it is just one clarifying.
Fire safety code, yes.
Fire safety code.
We consider that part of domestic because it's part of your daily living.
Sure.
For stuff like this.
The other side of it is, to really support your point, I know we don't have an exact answer on the number of buildings as a part of this data center development or the number of square feet, but, and this is a big but, our development standards require a certain ratio of construction, constructed area versus the amount of lot size, correct? Like, you can't build everything to the full extent of the lot, there's a set ratio of what can be constructed on a lot. And I see Sean's coming up.
I'm asking, I'm asking Sean because sometimes ordinance has changed. I know there's setback requirements, I can't remember if there's lot coverage in industrial.
There's not directly lot coverage, but when you account for setbacks and you.
Drainage.
And drainage, obviously landscaping, you, there's a limit to how, the portion of a parcel that you can develop at the end of the day.
Okay, so we don't have a set ratio, but those impact what that potential developable land is.
Correct.
Absolutely.
And, and really, to the point of Sean, you coming forward, this still, once site design is completed, would have to go through a site plan review, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
So, so there, there's still a check and balance on what that is before construction or any shovel can break ground, building permits, final site plan review, et cetera, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
And it has to go downstate for commercial plan review as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner. Any other, Mr. Thomas?
The closed-loop system, I'm very interested, obviously, in that for what's going on over in New Carleil. To be clear, that's what you use, closed-looped?
Correct.
The, the demand for, the, the usage for water is not going to be as great as you thought when you originally got this passed over a year ago, right?
Correct, I don't even know that we had figured out the usage. I think there was a lot of questions at the time. I, I would probably say it's more accurate to say I couldn't fully divulge that information at that time without giving away who the client was, because at that time, they hadn't purchased the property, and that's something that's somewhat unique to Microsoft, so if, if I had said that, it would have been a dead giveaway, so I'm not sure. I, I don't know that I can say that I didn't know that at the time, I don't know that I had fully thought it through because it wasn't something that had been shared openly. Does that make sense?
But yeah, it doesn't, but that's what you, that's what Microsoft is currently using?
Yes.
The, the closed-loop system?
Yes, so that the water and sewer usage that we're talking about is for the use of restrooms, use of break rooms, that kind of thing that you would find, again, in an office building, not for the cooling system.
And to be clear, you don't, you don't have more plans to purchase other land?
No, I, I think it's been pretty clear through this process that that would be a challenge, and I don't think they're looking to take on any more of a challenge than we are at this point.
And you bought this land because it became available, or?
So, one, the, it became available, which it wasn't when we originally started, but again, as we're completing traffic studies and looking at routing of, you know, utility lines, it really assists to have that all incorporated into the Cleveland Road corridor. So if additional right-of-way is dedicated, that's where you want your utilities, you don't want them weaving in and out of private properties. And really, if those road improvements were to come out of the traffic study, we would likely be here anyways because we would probably be in a position where we'd have to approach the property owner and say, we need additional right-of-way, you know, and that's either going to have to come from the county engineer or from our client to help acquire that right-of-way, so.
When would the traffic study now, that is going to be, do you have a ballpark estimate on that? How, when would that be complete? And, I mean, whatever came back and said, hey, we got a problem here, these, the traffic's going to be considerably higher than what we estimated, how, how do you handle that?
So they anticipate the traffic study to be completely wrapped up by early July at the latest. Again, we're working hand-in-hand with Sky Matters the whole time to not only address the long-term impact, but also the short-term construction impact. I, I've done a lot of development, I can't imagine with the amount of frontage and certainly with this piece, that there would be any situation that couldn't be accommodated within the land we own.
Refresh me, what was it, about nine hundred acres last year that got approved?
Slightly over that, yeah.
Okay. So this would be just under a thousand acres total?
Yes, less what we dedicate to the right-of-way. So I know we lost some for one of our subdivisions, I think we lost about forty acres when we were doing the dedication on the north side of Cleveland Road. We did a subdivision there. We will, we also have a significant amount that falls within Judee Creek and the floodplain, so it's not nearly a thousand acres of usable space. About sixty percent of it, I think, is usable.
How much?
About sixty percent.
Sixty percent? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Any other, Mr. Rudden?
Yeah, Sean, I got a question, I wanted to follow up, and I, I just kind of wanted to piggyback on, on what Mr. Tanner was, was bringing up. So, we talked about drainage, and then I heard mention of, of vegetative buffer, and, you know, there's going to be a, a final site plan. Are those going to be included in that? And is that process of the final site plan, is that, is that a public process?
So, final site plans typically are not, they're submitted to the building department, reviewed by the planning agency. I do know that, I believe they've reached out to Sean about some initial questions on the landscaping requirements.
So maybe I should mention subdivision process rather than the site, final site plan?
So a subdivision would be a public meeting, I don't know that we're going to need a subdivision, any more of a subdivision on this property unless they choose to consolidate all of the parcels into one parcel. It's not required in order for them to pull building permits for the site.
Okay, so, but the, will the final site plan have a detailed drainage plan and then description of a, of a vegetative buffer on it?
So the final site plan that has to go through a commercial plan review with the county, county building department includes all of your foundation, electrical, plumbing, landscaping, lighting, drainage, access, fire protection, I mean, you name it, if there's an agency to review it, they're reviewing it during that process.
Okay, so this is just really a, a very early preliminary stage before getting into the details?
Right, and that's typically how zoning works. Once you figure out what your property's zoned, then you have the zoning ordinance to help you determine how you can develop that. And even more above that, like, again, we know that this is going to be an ongoing process, and there may be additional requests and requirements that they have to meet as they go through this process, like additional right-of-way being dedicated to the county for improvements.
Okay, that's fair. So, so Sean, would you basically agree with all of that?
That's why I let her keep going.
Awesome, awesome. Well, thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rudden. Any other questions from council? All right, seeing none, I do have a question, just to, and this is obvious, but I'm going to ask it anyway. This property is north of the most southern boundary of the Microsoft property, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the reason I ask that is because, you know, Mr. Rudden and I share, our districts touch each other, boundary on each other, and we had some discussion of a railroad possibly running along Capitol Avenue on the east side through our districts, and we found, and Mr. Rudden, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we found from our constituents that was not a desired, desirable use for that land?
Yeah, and that was why I was, you know, partly why I was asking clarification on the, on the business tech park use.
Right. And so, you know, we, you know, I'm going to vote yes for this piece of property tonight, but make it very clear to Microsoft that I would not vote yes for any acquisition of property south of their current boundary. Any other comments from council members?
Mr. Chancellor.
Ms. Drake.
I did not originally vote for the rezoning of this project, mostly because I didn't think the constituents were being heard through the process, and I think they needed more time. That being said, I am going to vote tonight for this piece because I think it's an isolated piece and it makes sense for your project, but I do share a lot of the concerns that we've heard tonight about this explosion of data centers all over the county, and we do have a lot of them. I think we have to think how, how much of a data center capital we want to be here in St. Joe County, and, and measure how much ag land we need to preserve, how we're using our resources, and what the community wants. So I just wanted to make that statement.
Thank you, Ms. Drake, and I would also agree with Ms. Drake that this is, you know, I think we do need to take a hard look at where we are after Microsoft and Amazon, and really consider, you know, the long-term effect on our county of taking more and more land out of agricultural production. All right. Yes?
I also, I voted yes on the, originally, and I'm still at a yes, but I do want to say as well, it's such an odd piece of land, you describe it well as a tooth, missing tooth, but I also am also very concerned about this influx of data centers that we have coming in, but I also think of this piece of property, of once you put that data center there, what is that person, that owner going to do with that small parcel of land and how they would farm it? So I'm in agreement as well with most of everybody up here, just wanted to say that it's kind of because it is that missing tooth that it, it does make sense.
All right, thank you, Ms. Shabazz. Any, Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Mr. President. I just want to add that while Ms. Smith noted that this was a part of the most recent adopted comprehensive plan as an approved use through this area, it was also an identified use through the past comprehensive plan from over twenty years ago, as well as the supplemental Capitol Avenue corridor plan. All of those activities over the last, give or take, twenty-five years involved public engagement, public venues and, and conversations, some more comprehensive than others, but nevertheless, very much a, a public-involved process to get any of those comprehensive or corridor plans approved. I do acknowledge, and I think we all up here understand that there, even if this particular facility is not going to have a tremendous draw on water utilities, all of these data centers are going to have a tremendous draw on power utilities. I think it's notable that Indiana Michigan Electric has recently announced that they're going to likely work with Elkhart and the surrounding area on reintroducing hydroelectric at one of the dams that they were otherwise looking to abandon or demolish. In Elkhart County, we've obviously seen an expansion of solar in St. Joseph County, it's hard to say if, how, or where that may continue to expand, but at least there has been some expansion to those diversified energy sources, as well as, I believe, AEP, Indiana Michigan Electric has been, as part of these agreements, expanding and reintroducing some of the capacity at Cook Nuclear Plant. So, yes, there is likely to be some draw on fossil fuels, I don't think that we can really argue that point, but we also have a diversified source of energy that is also going to support projects much like this, or at least the grid in our entire region. So for those reasons, across the board, I'm going to vote in favor of this, this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner. Any further comments from any council members? All right, seeing none, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Tanner, seconded by Mr. Rudden.
That is subject to the written commitments, sorry.
Motion to approve, subject to the written commitments, thank you, Sean.
All right, we have a motion to approve, subject to the written commitments, by Mr. Tanner, and.
Subject to, second for the written.
Seconded by Mr. Rudden, also subject to the written commitments. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shabazz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rudden?
Yes.
Ms. Hess? Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
President Shetzel?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 30 dash 25 passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read bill number 32 dash 25?
An ordinance to vacate a public way or public place located, located wholly within the unincorporated portion of St. Joseph County, public way or public place. Petitioner Greg Doms?
Committee report, please.
Mr. Shetzel, bill 32 25 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Katanzarite. Petitioner?
Uh, this is Sean Kleiner, your Plan Commission Director. Uh, again, this is just to vacate a short portion of the historic Snowberry Road. Um, this right-of-way was never developed. I don't even think anyone was really necessarily aware of it until a recent title search. Um, it's just to clean up the parcel that it runs through. Apparently, it was to veer east when it got south of State Road Two. Um, it's never going to be improved by the county or used as a road. So staff recommends approval.
All right, and did the petitioner have anything to add to that?
Brandon Dickinson, uh Dentons Bingham Greenbaum, on behalf of the petitioner. Because it seems to be a, a popular fact, I'll, I'll present it to uh the council as it was presented to the committee. The title search that located this um errant right-of-way that, that Sean's got shown was actually drawn up in the Lincoln administration. And it has been on the books since the Lincoln administration, um, and for the first time, it was uncovered here in 2025. And so we are righting the wrongs of our forefathers by straightening, uh, straightening the road out and, and getting rid of this angled uh right-of-way that um doesn't make any sense in this location. So I'm happy to answer any questions uh the council may have.
All right. Any questions from council?
Question?
Mr. Rudden?
Do we need to check with the historical society before we can make this change?
No comment.
Thank you. That's very good, Mr. Rudden. I'm sitting here as a history teacher, trying to think of something smart to say, and you beat me to it. Any other comments from council? All right. Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill number 32 dash 25. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on bill number 32 dash 25. Any further comments by any council members? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve made by Councilman Tanner, seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Chabaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rudden?
Yes.
Ms. Hess? Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
President Shetzel?
Yes.
Bill passes nine zero.
Let the record show that bill number 32 dash 25 was passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. We now move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? All right, seeing none, we move on to new business. Is there any new business? Seeing none, we move on to old business. Is there any old business? All right, seeing none, we move on to privilege of the floor. Please listen carefully to the following announcement. The public is invited to address the council on any item that was not on tonight's agenda. I'm going to interrupt my, my um instructions here for just a moment. So that includes items that are first reading items, okay? So if you have comments about something related to a first reading item, keep them general, avoid the specific bill, please. A time limit of three minutes shall be enforced for those wishing to speak during privilege of the floor. Before you speak, please sign in and then give your name and address for the record. Individuals may speak only once during this section of the agenda. Please use appropriate language and volume when addressing the council. Also, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council. Please refrain from directing your remarks to other members of the public who are in attendance tonight. Violations of these instructions could result in the forfeiture of your remaining time. Finally, the council does not normally respond to questions or comments posed during privilege of the floor. And with that, we would like to hear from our first guest. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Tom Rowe, 26160 Lake Lane, South Bend, Indiana, 46619. I have two different items. Number one, Ms. Nix, okay, that spoke earlier, was referencing to the newspaper article that I read thoroughly on several occasions, the South Bend Tribune. It was on this Sunday, page 5A, "Data Center Boom Means More Fossil Fuel Reliance." This was an incredibly well-researched document that came out of the Indianapolis Star. If any of the council members have not read this, I would encourage you to because it provided me a lot more insight as to this data center boom. And it's just not the state of Indiana, it's nationwide. And so I would encourage you to look at this, digest it, as more data centers are considered in the future. So that's on record right there. My other thing was, I was at the, the town hall meeting, like I stated earlier, at New Carlisle, where um Indian Department of Environmental Management took feedback from a crowd, about 30 different people. I thought it was well, it was excellently conducted. People, including myself, went up and spoke in regard to this. My question tonight is, and yes, not any type of politics, Republican or Democrat, on this council. I would like you, if it's all possible, because you are a powerful force in this community, you are the council. With that being said, I would question or challenge you, each of you to, to tonight, I know that they make the decisions, but you have opinions on the filling in of the wetlands. You have those thoughts, you have opinions. And that can influence downstate if you so choose. I would like each of you council members, if not now, to commit yourself to saying, yes, fill in the wetlands or don't fill in the wetlands, but take a position. You've heard all the information, take a position. And if you don't, then you're not making yourselves vulnerable to taking a position, okay? You're just sitting, oh, it's somebody else's. Please don't pass the buck. Let us know where you stand on filling in the wetlands or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Good evening again, council. Dan Caruso, 305 Compton, uh, New Carlisle. Thank you for your time and, and your careful consideration of, of the facts here tonight. And your, your questions are on point, and many, are many of the questions that we all have. Thank, thank you, those of you who came to our public hearings uh in New Carlisle and, and were interested in what was going on with the item situation with the filling in and the wetlands. And thank you to those who personally contacted me about the accident in the community that so impacted us. Uh, thank you for your, for your interest. The word comprehensive came up a lot tonight. And I see my friends here from the town, um, and some others that were involved in the comprehensive land use plan. Put in, we were asked to volunteer, to take our time out of our lives to put together, and I worked on the New Carlisle and the county plans, to develop the comprehensive land use plan. And we took days out of our lives, hours each day out of our lives to put this plan together. We just get it in ink, we get it down on paper here just recently, the last few months. And there, there appears to be the possibility that what our wishes were, what we took our time out to express, that we'd like to see this community look like, especially the community over by me, that that doesn't, really doesn't mean anything. It's really just a guide. It's not, it's not a, uh, something that we need to follow. And it disenfranchises me and anybody else who gave their time to sit and work on this comprehensive plan on how, the direction we'd like to see our community go, how we'd like our neighborhood to look. And not just us, all of St. Joseph County, because it was the, it was the county plan also. And to, and to designate a certain area as agriculture and to hear that somebody may be willing to uh, for, for the almighty dollar, allow it to be rezoned to commercial is just beyond me. Please do not allow anything to go against what the community has said we, our wishes are. Just listen to what the, what the community members said. Follow our lead. Uh, this is what we want. It, it should take precedent over the dollar. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caruso.
John Hamilton, 913 West Colfax. Uh, I'd like to echo the sentiments already expressed. It is wonderful to see this body act as a body. We appreciate the kind of thoughtfulness that you guys are expressing. It's part of the process. We are in this together. We are a democracy and it's great to see democracy in action. I'd like to shift the attention to a, a different subject. While we're busily um occupying wide swathes of the county in terms of industrialization, we have a very valuable hunk of property in the county's hands that could serve all the people for all time. And that is the Portage Manor property. It has great environmental interest. Not only that, though, it has enormous historical interest. This is where St. Joseph County, St. Joseph River, the whole shebang began in the late 17th century. And it's here, Portage. It was the means by which people could move from Lake Michigan to the Mississippi. And that is just one aspect of what this property allows. In the uh, the ravine, you've got woodlands that are in pretty decent shape. In the farmlands, you've got the, the, the process of succession that kids learning about the environment could see and feel and hear and touch. And it is happening. Succession is happening. Wildlife is returning. This is a golden opportunity to preserve while we, at the same time, are confronting serious issues about what we should or should not conserve elsewhere. So I look forward to talking down the pike, either by petition or whatever, to preserve the um Portage Manor property, all of it, because all of it is extremely valuable for all of us and for our children in countless generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Good evening again, Mike McManus, 51940 Lilac Road. I'd be remiss, having spoken so many times to you about the open door law, not to bring up in a general matter that may or may not be specific to a meeting that may or may not have happened um within 24 hours. There was notice of an executive session by the county commissioners that was posted. There was no notice posted by the council. My understanding of the open door law is that you can have a joint executive commission, executive session meeting, but that each individual body has to give the appropriate open door law uh notice. Perhaps I missed it, but it was not on and is not as of about four o'clock this evening. There was no executive session notice for the council. Again, not specific to any meeting that may or may not have occurred, but I haven't seen such a notice. And I believe it was and is required. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McManus. Anyone else in the room wish to take advantage of privilege of the floor? Seeing none, is there anyone online who would like to take advantage of privilege of the floor? Uh, Mr. Francis?
Uh, yes, yeah, thank you. Again, good evening, councillors. Steve Francis, Judea Lake Drive, Clay Township. I, I really appreciate the intelligent conversation that's going on and dialogue. Um, I just want to say that uh, the comments uh by all involved, from the council to the petitioners, to the, the members of the audience have been very informative. And I just want to acknowledge that, very civil as well. So I do want to speak to um the data center issues in this county. Uh, I think that we know Amazon and Microsoft are here and Amazon is built with amazing speed out west with lots of problems and issues. Uh, but others are circling and I think that we need to be careful that we become, in some sense, a target for data center companies. Uh, Meta, Facebook, Apple, Google, who knows, uh, are, are looking at this because we have fairly inexpensive land, good sources of water, clear, clean water, cheap water, also cheap, fairly inexpensive electricity. Uh, on that point, I want to speak to the water and electricity. Uh, it really, you know, I don't know what, what situation, where we are with the Microsoft Development Agreement. But, you know, in the Amazon Agreement, I argued that, that we should have some kind of measurement uh or expectations about their water use and their electricity use. Uh, but that didn't get built into the development agreement and I suspect it's not either in the Microsoft Agreement. But on electricity alone, those of you may have seen uh the ABC expose on that. Uh, while I and M certainly does have solar and wind, their main source of energy is going to be natural gas in the next 10 to 15 years before they extend uh the nuclear plant and also are proposing to build another small nuclear module down south. But natural gas, uh, we, we need to be concerned. Uh, as a, as a member of the Green Ribbon Coalition for South Bend, the city of South Bend, and a co-founder with others, with Mayor Lickkey and through Mayor Buttigieg, and today I'm a co-chair of that commission or that coalition. All of our efforts to lower carbon use by the city of South Bend will be completely overwhelmed by the data center use. And I think the council, it's time for the county to evaluate the use of our resources to begin looking at what's our solution to climate, the climate crisis, to measuring our carbon and having a plan, a climate action plan, like the city of South Bend because all of our work is rendered asunder by the data center and the electricity use that they will uh entail, even though it may include nuclear, solar and wind and some more hydro. So I urge us to do that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Ms. Nix?
My apologies. Uh, Cheryl Nix, Clay Township. Um, I want to start with some, expressing some gratitude because I think sometimes that's important and I heard a lot of that uh in these recent comments. I want to thank uh Councilor Mark Katanzarite for expressing his concern about the shut-off of immunization grants. I echo my similar concerns. I, I'm shocked by the decision to shut down immunization grants when we know that there are children whose families perhaps can't afford immunizations. I'm very blessed that my grandchildren are all immunized against measles, mumps and rubella. And uh, this is very discouraging and I appreciate you speaking up, uh, Mr. Katanzarite. I want to express my appreciation to uh Councilor Jen Chabaz and Commissioner Raphael Morton for attending the IDEM public hearing on the filling in of the wetlands by Amazon. I think it's likely that IDEM is going to tell Amazon they can, they can destroy 10 acres of life because it appears that our state is not interested in preserving wetlands, which is really unfortunate. I'm not sure how you can call yourself pro-life when you're willing to destroy over seven football fields of amphibians, birds. football fields of amphibians, birds, all kinds of living creatures by dumping tons of dirt into their homes, but that's, it appears to be the attitude about development. And regarding the data centers, I was speaking with my sister. My sister used to work for a company that was very involved with data centers and helping implement them, and I just want you to know that the promise of jobs is exaggerated. She said a handful of people work each shift in these data centers because they're so automated. So I don't know who's talking to you about hundreds or a thousand jobs. I, I would urge you to do more research on the number of jobs promised with these data centers. I'm not sure we're getting what we're promised. So thank you so much for your time. Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Nix. Ms. Countryman?
Mary Countryman, 52959, Timothy Road, New Carlisle. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I was excited, and it was a good thing. I was muted when the lady was talking about the comprehensive plan being the guiding force. So yes, thank you for using the comprehensive plan, even though it was, oh, changed, edited quite a bit from what so many of us put work in, are working to. But thank you for that, and thank you for those who came to the IDEM meeting. I appreciate you showing up for our community when you came out to New Prairie High School, and thank you for asking questions, and thank you to Mr. McManus that brought up some excellent and very interesting points that I hadn't even thought about. That's kind of eye-opening there, but thank you for your work you do, you do, and I look forward to seeing more of you in our community and involved in our community with what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Countryman. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak during privilege of the floor? All right, seeing none?
Hi, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Can you hear me? This is?
Yes, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is, thank you. This is Riley Thompson, New Carlisle. I'm glad to hear a lot of reluctance about the data centers. I just want to echo that we've had quite enough out here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak during privilege of the floor? Okay, I do not see anyone. I'd like to note that our next committee meeting will be May 27, and our next regular meeting will be June 10 at 6:00 PM. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Katanzerite?
I know we're not supposed to take, to task things that people say under privilege of the floor, but just as a point of clarity, maybe I would ask our legal counsel to confirm this, but I do just want to, one comment was made that we may have been illegally participated in the meeting. I do know for a fact, I do know for a fact that our notification was posted where it's supposed to be posted for that meeting, and all the local media outlets were notified that we were part of that meeting.
Correct.
Our admin assistant, Jen, did do that.
Yes.
As is legally prescribed. Could you confirm that, Mr. Zalis?
Yes, you were copied in the email.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Katanzerite. Now, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.